Good evening. Welcome to the Oxford School Committee meeting. Tonight is Monday, July 26, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This time, I'd also like to open the floor for public comment. I remember, public comment has to be focused on the agenda that we have for tonight. So the floor for public comment is open. Seeing no one from the public here, I will close the floor for public comment. We do have a couple of consent agenda items. So the members, we have a few lists of surplus and disposal lists. I would say if there's any questions, we can certainly drive it through the superintendent or through Justin, but if there isn't, and we do need a motion to approve these lists.
I'll make the motion to approve the list, but I do that sadly.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I have some questions.
I'll second. Okay, we have a second on the floor, but we are open for discussion and questions. So go ahead, Mrs. Griffin.
So I see that a lot of the ELA books are about seven years old. And I was wondering, have we looked into how we're gonna use those books, reappropriate those books? Is there a way we can donate them or get money back in some way? Because they look like they're in pretty good condition.
Yeah, for some of the English books, I can ask our admins about that and find out if there's ways to donate them. I know that'd be an opportunity for another school system, maybe to use them somewhere else, but we'll let you know.
And then I also wonder why, you know, they can't still be used even though we have new curriculum. I would think that they would be a nice supplement. Our teachers are very familiar with them. You know, even though we have, you know, curriculum, I'd hate to see things be discarded so quickly.
Yeah, I think a lot of that was discussed with our new curriculum director and our principals about what was gonna stay and what was gonna go, what we can make room for, because we do have so many new materials. I think that was the focus of it. I know, in speaking with our curriculum director today, she did find a school that is gonna use some of the resources. I'm just not sure exactly which ones those are, but I can find that out and get that back to you. And I believe those are the seven-year-old ones.
And is there any way that we would see any funding from that?
I don't think so. I know we tried to do buybacks when we came with books. We discussed that also today. But I can find that out, too.
Okay.
If you could come forward, Mr. Pelzarsky.
That's why I just wanted to speak to that. We tried calling Fall It, which is typically a place that takes used books. They have zero value for any of the 2014 wonders. We called three or four different organizations. Then we called a bunch of, we reached out to a bunch of charitable organizations for overseas donations. And realistically, they want money. They don't want books. And they want us to pay for the shipping for the books to go overseas. It was just, it was too cumbersome. As you can see from my pictures, they're taking up a ton of space. So we have reached out, Tara Trainer has reached out. Today, she made a delivery for samples of things that we use that were brand-new. No one wants the old 14s. We really hit a wall. So our teachers have already scoured through and will, and there is some stuff that they want for supplemental, some of the big books and some of that good class material. And we're keeping all of the leveled readers. Those are not being disposed of. It's just the textbooks and the workbooks that we are absolutely now.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anything else, Mrs. Griffin?
Just maybe some of the books can go home with our students.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve both lists. Do we want to amend it to hold off on the ELA till we hear more from the superintendent? Or just heard from Mr. Pelzarsky, Fall It is something I've gone through, too, and, you know, if they can't use them. I don't know. I just know this is the time of year when you're trying to get ready for the new school year. You wanna try to get out the old, bring in the new, and set up spaces. So is it something you want us to hold till we get more answers? Because then we'd have to just amend the motion.
How are other people feeling? It just makes me uncomfortable to get rid of them so quickly.
Well, I hate to throw out materials. That's why I said I make that motion sadly. But if they've looked at every avenue of trying to get rid of them, and aside from giving them to students who aren't currently with us, makes it a little bit more difficult and they have to hold on to them, I kind of feel like we should just move forward. They seem to have done their due diligence in trying to get them used or donated, whatever. So I'd be ready to vote.
Any more discussions? All right, so we have a motion, a second. I will call for the vote to approve both, all these lists as given to us. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
It's gonna be a pain, because there's one more thing besides the textbooks that I'd like to discuss. And I don't know if it's, if we're just discussing the textbooks or we're possibly discussing the tractors.
All right, so we're in the middle of the vote. Can I pause the vote?
No.
Okay, so the vote is on pause.
Sorry, another question. So I'm trying to do my homework on this farm tractor and looking it up, and it seems like, even with the date of it being, I think it's like in the late 1980s, it looks like it can fetch some decent money. And I know that that money, I'm assuming, would go back to the town if it was auctioned off. And if it wasn't auctioned off, it would be probably re-appropriated to another department. Is this something that you really think it's in our best interest to get rid of, even though we don't have somebody right now that can use it?
I'll call Mr. Ladue up for the money.
Is this the middle school in that garage?
He's the guy that was telling.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chad.
Quick question, where is this house right now?
Currently, the tractor is downstairs at the high school.
Oh.
So the big main door is out back. It's one of, in those garages.
Gotcha, thank you.
So it's a 1987 tractor. We have not used that in quite a few years. DPW typically does our snow removal, so that they have all that equipment. That's my understanding of what the tractor used to be used for years ago. We use it for snow removal here at the high school. But again, so it hasn't been used for years. My understanding is the staff has to be licensed properly to utilize. I believe it's a hoisting license you need to operate a tractor like that with a front-end bucket on it. That's pretty much all I have for information. Yeah, just to kind of repeat what Ms. Griffin said, yes, it would be turned over to the town. The Board of Selectmen would then either reallocate it to another department that might not use it, or they would declare it surplus. Typically, it's auctioned off, and those, whatever monies they get from auctioning off would go back to the town coffers.
So am I understanding this disposal is giving it to the town?
Correct. It's turned, it's...
Town first.
And then auctioned off, they don't re-appropriate.
So the school department is releasing control and custody of the vehicle, and it would go to the Board of Selectmen, and they would do what they wish with it.
And you don't see us needing it at any point?
No. I don't foresee us using it for anything. Again, DPW does our snow removal. Any light-duty snow removal for the sidewalks, things like that, is done with a snow blower, because again, you know, licensed person to operate it. So nothing in the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Any other questions? About the tractor?
It just seems like a big thing to give away. It's a big-ticket item to try to purchase back. That's all.
I mean, it sounds like there's not gonna be a need for it. I mean, the highway department in the town does all our fields, which look amazing, all our grass, do the plowing and the parking lots. It's really just snow blowers in the sidewalks. You don't need, I was a junior in high school when that thing came out. That's a long time.
Thirty-four years old.
That's a long time ago.
Yeah. I just know that it still has a good value from the limited research that I did on other bids through other, you know, towns that are selling theirs off. And, you know, that's even by like taking the whole thing apart and selling the bucket and selling different pieces. So it's hard for me to see something go away, because I know how hard it is to get it to begin with.
All right, any other questions? We got any other surplus items? All right, so we're in the middle of the vote, so is a yes, yes, and I'm a Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Five yeses. Thank you, Mr. Ladue.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, we do have, it's gonna be a little bit complicated with the minutes, because we have some people who are here, not here. So we do have to approve four sets of minutes. So all of us were here on the June 28 meeting, all this current board, so is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion, a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Five yeses. All right, next set of minutes was executive session minutes from April 1, 2021. Ms. Cook was not on the board at that point, and Mr. Coonan is since no longer on the board. So is there a motion from the other members who were present to approve these minutes?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second that.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, call for the vote. Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Four yeses, one no longer on the board. We also have executive session minutes from May 10. Once again, Ms. Cook was not on the board yet, and Mr. Coonan is no longer on the board. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, call for the vote. Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. One affirmative, one no longer on the board. And our last set of minutes is from May 24, 2021, executive session. Molly was, Ms. Cook was present at this time, but Ms. Griffin was not at the meeting. So is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second? All right, any discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none, call for the vote. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
And Mrs. Griffin is abstaining. Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes for affirmative, one abstention. Business office, Mr. Ladue, do you have anything else?
I have a request.
All right, thank you, sir. And I apologize for not saying this at the outset, but Superintendent Lucas is first meeting tonight, so exciting times in Oxford, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, thanks for the warm welcome, Jeff. Honored to be serving as a superintendent of Oxford Public Schools. Started on July 1, obviously, as you folks know, it's been great. As part of my entry plan, I've been doing interviews. I've interviewed 31 staff members, which includes all of central office and all the administrators in the buildings, some of you folks also. Cory's dodging me, but that's okay. We'll meet eventually. But it's been great to talk to you and many folks in town also. Has been terrific in really trying to learn about Oxford, its great history and everything that's going on. Those conversations have really focused on what do we have for strengths as Oxford, for our students, and also where do we have opportunities for growth. And it's really led to some great discussions, and I'm learning a lot and look forward to learning and meeting more and more folks from Oxford as time goes on. We obviously have many opportunities for growth, but it's been, you know, I've been struck, especially with over and over hearing the dedication of the teachers and support staff in the buildings for children. It's been really awesome and inspiring to hear. And then obviously, the teamwork from school committee with teachers, administration, central office, you know, cafeteria workers, custodians, everybody pitching in for COVID to make sure our students receive a quality education is something that a lot of folks are proud of in this community, and they should be, and did a great job. And I've heard that over and over and over from many, many people in our community, and I hope to get meet with more. I've offered out to our teachers and support staff to meet with them also, invited them to meet with me, and shared their knowledge and experience. And eventually, I'll offer it out to the towns. We've been booked onboarding a lot of new folks and doing interviews and other stuff. It's been terrific. Great learning experience so far for me. I did ask Bill Deal to be here. He is my coach for the Superintendent Induction Program, which you guys have sponsored, which I'm very thankful for. Bill is here and would love to introduce himself. Thanks for coming, Bill.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Bill, welcome.
Hi, Bill.
I don't want to interrupt the momentum you have. So I won't be too detailed, but I do want to give you an overview of the New Superintendent Induction Program and your role and Mike's role in that. Now firstly, I met with Mike for several hours last week, and I'm very impressed with him. He just talked about his impressions of you all, and I also was impressed with his energy, his commitment, his dedication to quality, high standards, et cetera. So I think he made a great selection of superintendent, and I think part of my role is to kind of help support that and support his success. It's the New Superintendent Induction Program, which started 12 years ago. It's a combination effort by MAS, which is the Massachusetts Association for School Superintendents, and DESI. So basically, they came together because they had a big turnover of superintendents in the state, across the country, that's true. And they said, we need to do something to really help support new superintendents so they stay, they grow, they are very successful and supported. It led to the genesis of this particular program. This year, the second-largest number of new superintendents are in the program, because there was a heavy turnover from last year. In COVID-19, for many, many people found it very difficult to continue working under that circumstance, so you had a big turnover. The new superintendents account for 10% of the schoolchildren in Massachusetts. It's a big chunk of folks, which makes this program kind of even more important for Massachusetts' success. Basically, the role is to strengthen and support the role of superintendent in carrying out vision, mission, and the plans of the district. It really, the focus is on teaching, learning, and equity. It also is helping develop the capacity of all the leaders and teachers. It helps to help Mike think and act strategically, and also to develop his skills as a leader. It's made up of two different elements. First of all, content sessions. So this year, there'll be eight content sessions. Six of them, five of them are two- or three-hour online sessions, and three of them are in-person full-day sessions. And the content covers a number of different skills, strategies, tools, and so on, for Mike to be able to use as he's entering this position and moving forward. You know, for example, he mentioned doing the interview process, doing a SWOT analysis, looking at root cause analysis for issues that may be threatening the school district. Those kinds of things are part of the content. And then there's coaching, involving myself, following up on both the content and also on issues that make him up for Mike that he wants to talk about and get some coaching on. I want to stress, I'm not a mentor, I'm a coach. The difference here is I'm gonna ask more questions than I'm gonna give answers. The strategy of NISIP is not to give answers to new superintendents, but to build their capacity and knowledge, you know, through guided questions, through, but also if things come up for Mike and he wants to say, you know what, what do you think I should do? I'll tell them what I think, but I won't tell them what to do. So again, that's the real focus, is I'm supporting him as a leader. So the other area is, after just the first year, there are also area consultancies. There are superintendents in the region who are also new superintendents, be part of consultancies with Mike and looking at problems of practice. I came from the Collaborative Educational Services in Northampton. We worked with 36 school districts, 19 superintendents. We found, especially last year during COVID, having a network of superintendents to talk with and problem-solve with was invaluable. And I think you may have found that, too, with Christine Nash and her network. It's really, really important. So there'll be a whole network also for Mike to be able to work with and call up and interact with and so on. My interaction with Mike, all of that's gonna be confidential, so he can kind of rely on me as a confidential ear. And then also, lastly, work products. So three work products this year, especially focused on. The first is this entry plan, which he alluded to. So it's a plan. He'll come forward with this plan to you towards the end of the summer or early September. Basically, he says, here's all the different things, all the different data I want to collect. I'm gonna look at this data, this is already out there, analyze it, I'm gonna talk to these people, interview these people, I'm gonna observe classrooms and principals, et cetera. So all the things he's gonna do to collect a broad range of data about Oxford. And then from that, he's gonna give a report to you. And the report then will come after the entry plan, probably early fall. So basically, based on all the different data I collected, people I talked with, and so on, here's where I think we are. Here's where I think our strengths are, here's where I think our challenges are. And then he will go through a whole process of revisiting the whole issue, the whole, all the different answers with people, so they can give feedback, say, well, Mike, I, maybe you should add this to it, or what about that, whatever. So really want to try to get a very complete sense of, for himself and for all of you, about where things stand with the district. And that then leads to a strategic plan, and that kind of comes as the year goes on. And then will lead to more specific plans. I know you have a strategic plan, I saw it on your website, not sure how old it is, but this will be one replacing that. You do have a really nice transition plan for this year, with a lot of new staff and so on in that, that I think you guys saw in May. Really very comprehensive. I know Mike's using that as part of his hiring process. That's a really great document for him moving forward. So it's a three-year program. Mike will do a number of different projects as part of that. At the end of the three years, he'll also get a lot of PDPs, Professional Development Points. Now, we'll go a long way towards his, move to his next level of superintendency. So a number of things that we're doing as part of this, and I guess I'll leave it there and see if there are questions about the program or about our current status and work with Mike.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions for any members? None at this point, continue, sir.
Pardon me?
None from us right now. If you have any more...
Like too complete or too incomplete?
Very incomplete, yeah.
All right, I'm always available to answer your questions, but thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you for coming tonight, Bill. All right. All right, in your packet, you guys see an update on personnel, which has been terrific so far. I hired a lot of new folks coming to the district, very excited about them. There's an update here, Helen and I have onboarded four more folks today. We have more tomorrow. It's been very busy, but it's been great. Very excited. We have a lot of educators, very excited to join Oxford. Do you guys have any questions on that?
Any questions on the personnel? Yep, September?
Oh, I was just gonna ask the broad-spectrum question. I think we had talked about 35 positions, and how are we as far as number-wise-ish?
How much do you know of number-ish where we're at?
Probably about halfway there.
Okay. People who have been onboarded?
Either onboarded or scheduled to come in this week.
Okay, perfect.
Quite a few scheduled this week.
Thank you.
Chafee is the leader in the clubhouse so far with hires.
I'll just get him back there, cheer him on.
Yeah, just a quick question. Since last year, so my first year on the board, beginning of a school year, and I don't know if because of COVID we didn't do it or if we don't do in Oxford, but do we ever do a night where new hires come in and meet the school committee, very least professional staff?
Not that I'm aware of.
Never.
Something we can sort of explore.
Something we can look at, maybe in September, just any new teaching staff or, you know, obviously administrative staff, that kind of stuff.
Anything else?
That was it.
All right, I'm just gonna, you know, people are gonna get tired of me saying this, but I'm just gonna continue to advocate for this. So, you know, we have the pending ESR hires on the right, lots of pending positions. Is there still any discussion about more support at the high school? Dean of Students, Director of Guidance? I know it's not sustainable at this point, but it's certainly gonna help the transition back into school full. So is there any, is there any talk of posting that, taking a couple of these positions that might not get hired and consuming that into some money? I guess I just want to throw that out there.
No, there is not yet. I think we're gonna stick to the recovery plan, acceleration plan for now, and see how the hiring goes. So far, we've been able to fill most of the positions we've put out. I think the plan for now is to stick to that and then see where we're at, perhaps, as Bill alluded to, me creating my action plans and what we need to do, and having an opportunity to work with folks at the high school, and see if that's something for next year, possibly. If we see at the end of ESR funds, we're not filling a number of positions, we could talk about some flexibility of what we might want to do with those grant funds.
All right, I just, again, it's disappointing to me that I continue to talk about this. I mean, the biggest building in the district, and we have three positions we're looking to add. It doesn't make sense. But I will let that go for now, that, so as long as my opinion is being heard, I guess that's all I can ask for. So continue, sir.
Any other questions on that? All right, excellent. In your packet, you also have the job description for the Director of Student Services in Special Education. Do you have any questions on that?
Any questions from the committee? This is gonna require a vote to approve this.
Thank you.
Mrs. Forbes?
So I saw as I was previewing this packet that Title 1 has been removed from like every paragraph. So who is going to be overseeing Title 1?
The curriculum director is.
Oh, okay.
So some of the responsibilities for this got moved to the curriculum position also. Yeah, no question.
Now, is this, just to follow up with that, they work together, obviously, I would imagine, because they're gonna share students?
Yes, there's, yeah, absolutely.
And maybe flip from one to the next?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's definitely some overlap in both positions.
Okay.
Yes.
So is that mentioned anywhere in here? I didn't really see where it said working with.
I mean, they both have responsibilities K through 12 with our students. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
So that covers it in a nutshell?
Yeah.
Any other questions from any of the members? Is this something, Helen, that I need, I don't need to read this whole job description, correct? We can just, okay. So we do need a motion to approve the adjusted job description for the Director of Student Services in Special Education. I'll make that motion. All right, we have a motion and a second from Mrs. Forbes. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Ms. Cook? Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I am a yes, too. Five yeses.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, we have a student residency exception, which needs a vote. We have a family that had a recent tragedy, would like two of their students, their family, to continue at Oxford, even though the residency of the children has had to change, so we're asking for an exception for two children. One would be entering kindergarten, one would be entering eighth grade, so.
Any questions or discussions around that, board members? So I guess we do have something in writing from The Guardian, correct?
We do. We absolutely do. And I would send a non-president sending letter to the family, that this is one time only for a year. The family would be very appreciative. They have a unique situation at this time, where the students cannot live in Oxford, but they have a wonderful family that's supporting them, and would love for them to be able to stay in Oxford, if possible.
Any questions or discussion? All right, we do need a motion to accept that. All right, we do need a motion to accept that. I'll make that motion.
A second.
All right, motion accepted. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Call for the vote, Ms. Cook? Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yeah.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. All right.
That is it for my report.
All right.
Thank you.
We do have, thank you, FY '22 appointments, we do need a vote on this. So I guess I will read this into the record quickly. Following the June 28th, 2021 school committee meeting, there were a few additional individuals who came forward to express interest in serving on the district's Diversity, Equity, and Anti-Racism Subcommittee. Therefore, please officially appoint the following individuals effective July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022. Tara Trainer, Curriculum Coordinator, Curriculum Director, excuse me, Michael Lovell, Assistant Principal, Katie Ann Phillips, Technology Director, and David Nugent, Principal. And I think we can just take this all into one vote, correct? If I just add the second piece, additionally, the school committee should officially appoint the following firm as the Special Education Legal Counsel for the period July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022 of Stoneman, Chandler, and Miller. Do we have a motion on the floor, any discussion? Motion and a second?
Second.
From Mrs. Forbes. Any discussion? Seeing and...
Just one more question, how many people are on that committee at this point? Does anybody know?
I do.
I'm starting to be getting quite a few, I'd say.
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Nineteen, and then those...
Plus these four.
Yeah, and not counting you, not counting you too, so.
So 25 of us.
Yeah.
Wow. Impressive.
All right. Call for the vote. Unless there's any more discussion, I apologize.
No.
Ms. Cook? Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes too. Those two, or that motion passes. Warrant report, Mrs. Griffin.
All right, so I have a payroll and municipal warrant report for, let's see, July 26, 2021. So the payroll dated June 29, 2021 was for $1,348.59. I signed an accounts payable warrant dated June 30, 2021 for $256,968.75. An accounts payable warrant dated June 30, 2021 for $11,566.35. A payroll warrant dated July 8, 2021 for $108,419.81. An accounts payable warrant dated July 13, 2021 for $600,739.30. An accounts payable warrant for July 20, 2021 for $42,671.60. A payroll warrant for July 20, sorry, July 22, 2021 for $134,822.1. And an accounts payable warrant dated July 27, 2021 for $51,335.18. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Griffin. Members, any member requests a form, we'll open it up to you, Ms. Cook.
Post the thing on a form about all the things that we had to offer, but the PDF doesn't post. So I wish we could like make a website or something, like, I don't know if we could turn things into links instead of PDFs. I'm not how that works, I'm not good with technology, so. Maybe just so like, I know the form is a busy, busy place, so.
Yeah.
Just if we could get stuff out there with like a link or something that isn't a PDF, because that's not good.
Yeah, we could inquire with Katie and ask how we do that in the future, so we can advertise more. Sure. Anything else? Nope. Mrs. Forbes?
I'm quick and easy tonight, welcome, Mike, happy to have you on board.
Thank you, happy to be here.
I know you've been working hard, and I appreciate the time that you spent with me, and I'm sure everybody else got as much time, it was wonderful, so welcome aboard, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mrs. Forbes, Mrs. Griffin.
Just echo the same sentiments as Mrs. Forbes. Thank you so much for your generous amount of time and listening to the concerns and the history of the school department, and I'm excited for the future and what you have to bring us, so thank you.
We've learned a lot and look forward to learning more, so it's been great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, pal. Cora?
Great for you, Mike. I got a... I, just real quick, I normally don't get on to Facebook because as a principal, I always tell people, if you want to solve the problem, you should go right directly to the source and not get on to Facebook. But I was on the residence forum recently, and there's been a lot going on back and forth about critical race theory. So I just wanted to make, and somebody did call me out a couple of times that you're just saying something that's very calculated. I just want to make it very, very clear to people, okay, that critical race theory is not part of the social studies curriculum and has never been part of the social studies curriculum frameworks in Massachusetts. Just want to get that very, very clear. We do have a really, really, as you heard Mrs. Forbes say earlier, a Diversity, Equity, and Anti-Racism Subcommittee is, has quite a few people on it. I think it's really exciting, I think there's going to be some lots of great conversations. There's also some stuff that has come up out there that people feel like policies are going to be made in that committee. It's not how it works. That Subcommittee is going to have some deep conversations around diversity, equity, and anti-racism. And if they have any sorts of policies they want to look to add or adjust, that has to go through to the policy committee, and then it has to get kind of vetted out there, and then it has to come to this board and has to get voted. So there is a process, and again, I would just ask if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, please reach out to the superintendent, you can reach out to me as the chairman of the school committee or any one of the four, any one of the members of this board. But again, if you want information, come directly to the source, and I certainly, we can certainly work with you on that. So that is all I had tonight, other than welcome Mr. Lucas again. Really, really exciting time in Oxford to have new leadership, new vision, a great mentor, and looking forward to it, so thank you.
Me too, thank you.
Future, future business, any future topics for the agenda that any of the members might want to add tonight? Yes?
I would just love to hear how we're going to be training all of the new hires that we're onboarding. I'm very excited to hear about the, you know, the PD offerings, the mentoring program. And I'm sure that's coming in Mr. Lucas's vision for the district, so, you know, I will wait patiently, but when that comes, that's something of great interest I have.
How I'm training the hires is what you would...
Yeah, and PD for the year. You know, all of our Title II type of workshops and training for all of our teachers. Be great to hear what they're interested in, what they're excited about. I know they've done so much.
Is that something you might be able to tap on a little piece of it on the night?
Yes, absolutely. Can update you on the night, yeah.
Any other future topics? I know Mr. Burke and I were talking a little bit about masks and where we're going to be with that. So maybe just, you know...
Sure.
Just we'll have to wait to the, see where we are in a few weeks, but maybe that can be somewhat of a discussion if needed at that point.
Sure.
Anything else from the members? All right, our next, anything from you, Mr. Lucas?
No, I'll say, thanks, sorry.
Our next regular meeting will be Monday, August 9, 2021. But at this point, per MGL Chapter 30A, subsection 21A, we are going to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in connection with an ongoing legal labor matter involving a former employee. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the committee. The committee will adjourn from executive session and not return to open session. So at this point, we are going to go into executive session. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.